15th, 2018, let the record show that all commissioners are present. First item is order of business. Mr. Kessel, are there any changes to the order of business?
There are no changes to the order of business.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a couple of comments under-
Item 11 at the end of the meeting. One will be regarding the Theodore Roosevelt Library. And then the other one would just be a comment on the events that you guys discussed about. Those will come up at the end. Okay, we'll just do those during commission- During 11, during the commission minutes, or the commission comments? Yeah. Commission comments, okay. Anything else, commissioners? Questions? There are no changes, and one addition, Mr. Steiner would like to make some comments.
Make a motion to approve the order of business as stated.
We have a motion to approve the order of business.
Second.
A second. Any further discussion or questions? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Order of business is approved. Next up is consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda the commission would like to discuss? Now I look for a motion.
And make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions? Now we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Consent agenda is approved. We have one timetable agenda at 5:00. So we'll move into the non-timetable. And the first item up is our job description. And we'll have HR Coordinator Nomenek present that.
The job description is for the information intelligence analyst position. This position is for the Police Department. It is a support position, assigned to work with Patrol Criminal Investigation Division and the Drug Task Force. The position is tasked with analyzing and organizing confidential intelligence and information for officers that's either entered into the storage management system of the Police Department and/or shared among officers at information sharing meetings. This position will assist in coordination and maintenance of the evidence, storage, processing system of the Police Department. There's also a multitude of other various duties and assigned tasks and details associated with support duties for the Patrol Criminal Investigation and Drug Task Force. This position was put into the new format that we're using. It was scored, and it does come- it does score out to be 575 points, which puts it into Class III and a grade V position. It is non-exempt. It also does require an associate's degree, bachelor's degree is preferred, and three to five years specialized job-related experience. And we are asking for commission approval for this position.
Thank you, Mrs. Nomenek. Any questions for Mrs. Nomenek on this position? When are you looking immediate hire?
They are in a hurry to get this position opened and filled, yes. So we will, we will open it right away.
In budget-wise, or was this position in addition, or?
Yes, President Decker and Commissioners, that position was approved by the commission when Chief Dossinger brought it to your attention, the upbringing over the Drug Task Force.
Okay. Part of the Drug Task Force.
Mrs. Nomenek, I see that it will fall in line with the senior firefighter and senior police officer. Does that have similar requirements for the position?
Similar in scoring, I would say. Duties and all of that sort of thing would be different. But for this position, it does score out to be 575. I'm not exactly sure what a senior firefighter scores out to be, but it does fall in that same category.
Would you say the biggest differences would just be the education, experience, and maybe Chief Dossinger can answer these questions? Just curious on what some of the requirements are that got it to this level.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. Commissioner Trustum, even though this position doesn't supervise staff, there's going to be several programs that this individual is going to supervise. One of them, obviously, they're going to be working jointly with the Drug Task Force and the Police Department, and they're going to be bouncing back and forth between both buildings. Eventually, this is a new position for us, their duties are going to evolve. They're going to be eventually in charge of our evidence system. And part of that, our goal is to have body cameras in the next couple of years. Part of that, a big portion of our evidence control system is going to be monitoring and working with the evidence that's contained in those body cameras. So this person's also going to be in charge of that as well. Eventually, this person's also going to do cellphone dumps for us as well. So this is the first role where we have a non-sworn staff member that's going to be trying to alleviate some of the duties of a police officer. And that's kind of the direction that we need to go to alleviate some of the workload and help with some of the resource restraints that we currently have in our department. Education is a big portion of this. This is a position that's going to require a special knowledge, skills, and a skillset to hit the job running and the ability to work with numerous law enforcement agencies.
Can you describe some of those specialized job-related experience or skillsets? What are you looking for?
Ability to work with law enforcement agencies, gather information, document that information, put them in PowerPoints, do presentations. Those are examples of that. Ability to take, pick up on technology quick, know our database or Zerker system, also BCI's database system would be helpful for that as well, and work with North Dakota Slick.
Thank you.
Any other questions for either Mrs. Nomenek or Chief Dossinger? There are no further questions for staff or comments? I guess I would look for a motion on this, this job, the information intelligence-
Move to approve, Mr. President.
We have a motion to approve? And a second. Any further discussion? Now we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Job is approved. Financial report. We'll have our accountant, Mr. Maury.
Thank you, President Decker and members of the commission. Jumping right into it, just another snapshot of a slide that we've shown you in previous reports. This is our Treasurers' Report. And as a reminder, this includes all of our, all of our cash that isn't part of our trust accounts or part of our investments, I should say. So you won't see any major changes in this from the previous financial report. Same goes for the investments. We did make two quarters worth of payments for our pension contributions, so on the next quarterly report, you'll see those numbers change. But as of right now, these numbers are all consistent with where they were the last time we reported to the commission. With the 1% sales tax, and just as a reminder to the public, too, we record these on these graphs with when we collect them from the North Dakota State Treasurer's Office. They are recorded on about a two-month lag, so we can assume that the collections we receive in April were most likely earned in February. So with that said, April actually was about 18% lower than it was in April of 2017. As you can see there, we're down about 70,000, just over 70,000. And to this point, in 2018 through four months, we're actually about 3.5% higher in 2018 than we were in 2017. With the 0.5% sales tax, you'll see the exact same trend. Again, just as a reminder, we showed this slide just to show the public that we do record the money in separate funds, even though it's collected. It's exactly half of the 1% sales tax, but just recorded in a separate fund. With hospitality tax, you can see we had a slight increase in March, about a 9% increase in 2018 from 2017. But then in April, we had a decrease from 65,000 down to just over 50,000, which is about a 23% decrease. So through four months collected, we're about 3.5% higher in 2018 than we were in 2017. And then with occupancy tax, also a reminder to the commission, so these numbers are directly from the state treasurer, but a half of 1% of these collections do go to the general fund, with the remainder going to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. So with that said, April was down about 15% from 2017. And overall, through four months, the occupancy fund is about 21% lower in collections. And then in our oil impact revenue, as we've mentioned in previous reports, we're still have a portion of our collections being taken out to Dickinson State University of their 2.5 million that they were awarded. So I believe in June or July, that will be paid off, and we'll start seeing our collections more in line with where they were at the beginning of 17. And then finally, as we always like to include this slide, it's just a summary of the snapshot you're seeing in your packet. The detail is included in your packet as well. If any specific questions come up on a specific vendor, specific customer, let us know, and we can research what those, what the details are on that. But that concludes the financial report. If there's any questions, I'd be, do my best to answer them now. City staff recommends approval.
Any questions for Mr. Maury?
Mr. Maury, 161,000 in receivables that we're missing, over 91 days. Is there one large one there, or what, how come we're at 164,000?
So the best explanation I'd have for that, and not without looking into the detail, is sometimes we'll have a receivable that technically was earned a while back but hasn't been billed past that 90-day mark. So as soon as we enter it, it automatically shows up as 90 days overdue. I could pull out a report for the next meeting, just to kind of show you what makes up that number, if it would be helpful.
All right. Yep, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Maury? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item up is our interim appointment of city administrator, and that will be handled by city attorney Murtha.
Do it.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Excuse me. We need to approve the financial report.
Mr. President, I would move to approve the financial report.
Second.
Have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion on the financial report? Now we'll go ahead and vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Financial report is approved. Now we'll move on to city attorney Murtha.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the commission. At the last commission meeting, we discussed arrangements for an interim process, and the commission reached consensus upon appointing Deputy Carlson as the interim city administrator. However, a formal motion wasn't taken, so that you would have an opportunity to discuss and, at this meeting, and set an amount for, if you, if you desire to, additional compensation for Ms. Carlson during the interim period. So to, for example, there will be no, no one filling her deputy city administrator role, so she will, in effect, be doing both jobs. She'll be doing the city administrator job and the deputy city administrator job. Currently, the base pay for the city administrator job is 142,000. If I, I'll look to Linda to confirm if I'm, confirm or correct me as I say it, but I believe it is 142?
I think it's 116. On the scale, it is 116.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But that was the contract-
The current-
The current-
Current contract base, right. So the current, so thank you for my, for clarifying that. So the current contract basis is 142. She is below that. I would say that regardless of the amount you pick, the city will, if any, the city will realize savings, because what would be used from this line item would just be the difference between what city administrator Carlson is making currently to whatever that amount is. So in a sense, her entire salary from where she's at now, it will be your savings out of that line item. So if you'd like to discuss that, whether or not you would like to provide for additional compensation, and then a motion to officially appoint Ms. Carlson during the interim effect of June 1st, that would be what the, what would be the option for today. The other piece of information that the commission had asked to be sort of developed and brought back to them was there had been discussion of just a direct hire of a search firm, in fact, the same search firm that had been used to select deputy city administrator Carlson. I did have communications with that search firm. They, they did provide, and for your reference, it's provided here, a draft contract. This is not meant to be a, a contract for final approval today, but a contract, too, in essence, to give you an example of the scope of the work that could be provided should you decide to do a direct hire. The cost is 28,500. I did ask about assisting the city with review and revision of the job description for city administrator, and the firm did indicate that they would be able to do that with no additional charge. So that would be included in the price as well. The timeframe for the proposed schedule, they, I had, he had said, when I spoke to the individual in charge, that if the contract is, you know, approved immediately, they could begin in May, otherwise it would be the middle of June. I said, you know, at, at this point, there is a transition plan in, in place, and we just received this version of the contract this morning, and haven't had time to go through the details. The, some of the items inserted in here were, were done by the firm, and I have not reviewed and suggested changes to them at this point. However, we could bring it, if you decide you want to go this route, we can bring it back to you at the June 5th meeting for final approval, in which case the, the search and timeframes within that search would be adjusted to reflect a mid-June start time. At, at this point, I could also say that since you have set up a transition committee, that finalizing the, the contract and starting those initial discussions with regards to the job description are also something that could be deferred or delegated to that transition committee. So for example, the transition committee, if you desire, could meet between now and the June 5th meeting to kind of go through some of the details of this, so that when it came back to the commission at June 5th, you would have already, some members would already have had a chance to discuss, review, and interact with the search firm. Your other option, because again, this was a consensus, not a vote, your other option is to say that instead of doing a direct hire, we do want to explore what additional firms have to offer, in which case my recommendation would be to do an RFP to see what the responses might be. So those are the decisions I'm, I'm bringing forward to you for discussion today.
Okay, so let's, let's first discuss compensation, and then we'll move to a motion to appoint, so. See calculators going here, so.
And, and I do have, if it is of assistance to the commissioners, I do have a breakdown of the, should you want to know what various percentages would look like, we've also done those calculations, and so if you have questions about that, we can provide those numbers
In general, you will be doing 100% of your job, still?
Yes. I will be the deputy city also. But as far as the, my financials and stuff, I do feel that we have, between the finance department developing and taking on more, we also added a person down in finance. I'm not down there as much as I used to be. And we also have the executive team. You know, we do have a big group that is a leadership, and that all those responsibilities can be helped.
So in your mind, have you, do you feel like you're taking on 50%, 80%, more duties as, as it relates? Have you thought about that at all?
I've thought about it as far as just getting started in the transition. Mr. Kessel has been good about meeting with me and initiating me into some things. So I do have probably about, I would say, 30% more in, in meetings that I will be attending and things like that. So I'm doing some shuffling around to make sure that I'm attending those meetings to keep the city up. So I would say that's just the initiation of it. There could be more. I, you know, it just depends on when we have the transition meeting.
Okay. Murtha, attorney Murtha, what kind of percentages did you work out?
Um, anywhere from 5% to 30% of Ms. Carlson's salary. So an increase of, of her salary by that percentage. So I can provide those numbers for you if you'd like for discussion.
And I guess I'm, I was looking in that 25 to 30 area, so I guess what, what are your totals in 25 to 30?
25, an additional 25 to 30%, again, of, of her current salary would be, 25% would be 138, 150, and 30% would be 143, 676, which is actually more than the current-
Right.
-base for Mr. Carlson.
What do we assume, how long this is going to take to fill?
I would, I would estimate safely six months.
Six months? Safely six months?
Yeah.
I, I think with the numbers, if you work it backwards, you know, the, I would safely, this might be a little conservative, but I would take an additional 5,000 a month on top of where she's at now. Plug that number in there, I think coming out close to, you know, that percentage. Six months would be 30, she's a 116 now. Comparison to an annual salary, it's by 146, somewhere in there, but it's not going to be annual, but she's going to pick up an additional workload there.
Yeah. I, I'm thinking the 25 number is a good number.
25?
The what, what?
Percent?
What, what Mrs. Murtha just quoted?
The 138, 150.
138.
I would agree.
So you take 138 and a 116, you're talking 20, $2,000 difference.
But that, but that's spread over-
Right. So that's why I need, that's why I said we need to know the amount of time guessing, so it's six months.
Well, basically, her monthly salary is just going to prorate up for that period of time, and then it just drop off as soon as we hire a new city administrator. So I think with the 25 percent-
I think we're going to be right around 5,000. So maybe a little more.
Yeah.
But I, I would have no problem looking at 5,000, and then if necessary, doing another adjustment in three months.
Well, if, if we do the 20, the 25% are basically, her monthly salary will, will be determined off of, what was, was the total again?
The, the monthly total, or the-
No, the, the annual.
138, 150.
So we can, you can take 138, 150, and divide it by 12, and you'll know what her monthly total is, so.
Versus what her monthly is now.
Yeah.
She's at 110 right now?
I believe so.
Yeah. So I, I'm comfortable with the 25, divide it by 12, so.
I would be, too.
11.
I would defer any calculator use to Ms. Carlson, and just myself.
I know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of calculating going on right now, so.
And the amount was what, 11?
If those are the wishes of the commission, then I would suggest a motion that would appoint Ms. Carlson interim city administrator effective June 1st with a, a rate of pay increase commensurate with her appointment that reflects the additional 25%.
I would make that motion.
Second.
So we have a motion with a second to appoint Mrs. Carlson, effectively 25% increase to her current.
We plug the numbers in, looks, if you plug them in right, if you plug them in right, Mr. Frederick.
It's like $2,500 a month, is that correct?
$2,500 a month, I, to pick up an additional 30% of the workload.
President Decker and commissioners, I did figure it out, and it's 2302, so you were close. That's fine.
You okay?
I'm okay with it.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion, and that was made, again, I-
By me and a second by Mrs.
Mrs. Trustum, so. Any further discussion? Now we'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Mrs. Carlson, you are now the acting, as of, I should say, as of June 1st.
Thank you.
The act, not, not to cut him out quite yet, acting city administrator, so.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you.
And then we need to look at this, this proposal for a search firm. Are we comfortable with this, or do we go the route of RFP? Now, we risk going by RFP, probably a delay of a good two months. Am I being conservative, or am I?
Uh, no, no.
I would say the, the firm that we had brought us a wonderful selection, and I remember you and I got to sit in and meet with the final candidates.
Which some were local.
And some were local, yes. Yep. And so that gave us a very good flavor for what they could bring, and it also, for us it was a more casual atmosphere, so I felt like we got to really get to know the person. And this firm, they did a wonderful job, and I don't know why you'd go with something different and an unknown when you've got approval.
I would agree. I am comfortable with this firm. I think they did a great job, and I, I know we all value all the work you've done here. So I'm looking forward to see what candidates come to light upon their search.
So Mrs. Murtha, we, do we need a motion this evening, or do we need to wait until a formalized contract is in front of us?
I would just request the commission wait until June 5th, and I can bring back a, a contract in its final form, but I will continue to finalize and, and inform the search firm tomorrow that this is the route the commission wants to go.
Perfect, perfect. Okay, we're 5 o'clock, so we have a presentation, a Winkin Associates' presentation for Landville property expansion.
President Decker, commission, I wanted to give a little information about this presentation before Andrew Feier comes up here and discusses it. This originally, the contract was originally with Wink, was the Amendment 6-2017. It was the contract for investigation planning and work, and to conduct field investigations and suitability investigation report at the property that we're looking at just north of Atlanta. It was brought to commission, and the scope of the work, I won't go through the breakdown, was estimated to cost approximately $100,000. to cost approximately $100,000. And in the contract, it says, as usual, "We will bill for actual time and materials, but not to exceed $100,000 without prior authorization from the city of Dickerson." So, they did the work, and there was a lot of, I guess I would like to see, and I'm sure Andrew will discuss that, a lot of different tasks associated with this agreement. They have billed the city $98,989.93, but they have approximately $16,000 left to bill. That was part of the costs they had with this project. So, I'd ask Andrew to come and present and explain the overages and approval to pay over the contract amount.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, commissioners. Like I said, my name is Andrew Faya. I'm with Wink Associates, and I'd like to take some time here today to talk about why we were over on our original budget and scope. So, a quick summary of the work that we did. So, we retained to conduct an investigation on the north property to the existing landfill in regards to site suitability review for potential landfill expansion. The work consisted of eight borings, two temporary groundwater monitoring wells, and then together with a detailed field program, field screening, and complimentary sampling program aimed at delaying impacts. It was conducted in November to December of last year. So, to get more detail on the specifics of the scope of work based on the original proposal, so Task 1 was based on planning and work plan approval through the Department of Health through the solid waste program. Task 2 was to develop and conduct the work, which consisted of doing a soil stakeout, and then post-drilling surveys based on the eight proposed borings, installing the eight borings to specify depths set forth in the work plan based on those depths from 50 feet to 145 feet estimated, and then observe the soil borings and provide detailed descriptions on lithology and what formations encountered beneath that property, as well as to perform air monitoring for the purposes of ensuring safety for the drillers based on unknown potential risks for what was underneath that property, and then doing field screening based on using a photo identification detector to screen the returns coming off the borings, determine what concentrations were present in the soil, as well as to collect soil samples for geotechnical characterization. So, permeability, how fast water would move through the materials, grain size, and then chemical characterization. So, what was in the soil for impacts, VOCs, FOCs, metals, things of that nature, as well as to collect water elevation data to determine groundwater flow direction based on using the existing data we have for the landfill and the monitoring wells there, and then projecting that onto the north property. In addition, collect groundwater samples to determine characterization for impacts within the flow regime and groundwater, and then oversee boring abandonment based on the property being privately owned and not owned by the city, and then prepare field logs and provide updates to the city based on progress during investigation. Task 3 was to develop and prepare the actual investigation report. So, again, kind of summary of the previous slide with Task 2 is basically provide the same information to the city in written form. And then Task 4 was basically our breakdown of expenses and some other costs based on the work. So, based on that discussion with original tasks and what we were approved to do, and to what we actually did based on this slide, so the rationale, the reasons why we exceeded our original budget of $100,000 in the city, is we also above and beyond our original task, we conducted detailed photographs of the site, pre-drilling, during drilling, and post-drilling, to basically capture what was present on the property prior to Wink being on-site and disturbing the property, and as well as to survey and what we actually disturbed for land area for the owner. And the reason behind that was to protect the city in case of future legal action with claims for damages and things like that to the property. So, along with that, we calculated the impacts based on the scope of the work we did, drilling and the truck pass to get out to our eight borings. We surveyed in that disturbed area, and then mapped that and provided a figure to the city, again, to protect in case of future legal action. Another reason for the overage was the delay in the work starting based on the original plan versus what we were able to get out on-site, again, based on our original cost estimate, which then led to less daylight hours to do the actual work. As well as the landowner had cattle grazing on the property, which was not expected to be the case during the original proposal. So, initial steps had to be taken to prepare and not have the cattle be drinking out of our drilling solution or falling into our boreholes. So, we had to do additional work to make sure that was not giving issue with the city. Additionally, we had to sample for waste disposal based on the borings and the groundwater encountered, again, not knowing what was going to be in those media. So, we collected samples for characterization, again, to protect the city for disposal costs of potential hazardous waste. The installation of two temporary monitoring wells were required based on the methodology using with the drill rig and the boreholes collapsing during installation. So, the temporary monitoring wells were installed to allow us to capture a representative sample of the groundwater quality within the site. And then, as far as the boring abandonment process, so again, the work was done during the winter, so frozen conditions were encountered, and we were not able to fully abandon the borings based on things freezing. And then, as it slumps or it depresses in the borehole, you have to come back and keep fixing that. So, it was a delay with that. So, again, that protects the city in regards to legal action with the landowner having issues with cows breaking ankles or things of that nature. And then, somewhat all up, additional discussion in the text of the report describing all of those incidents to provide a better narrative for the city to evaluate potential for expansion. So, with that being said, the items listed in the previous slide, not typical investigation of this nature, based on the original proposal and scope versus what we actually did in the field. So, although we believe the project was completed in the best interest of the city, we do acknowledge that we did not go through the proper channels during the work on-site. So, we do acknowledge that formal approval was not granted prior to us doing the work. And then, I'm here today to respectfully request to be reimbursed for the amount requested for the investigation. So, again, to summarize, the original proposal was for $100,000 based on Wink's costs and all of our contractors, so at the drilling firm, the soil laboratory, and the chemical analytic laboratory. And as Gray mentioned, we've invoiced approximately $99,000 to date to the city, and we've held $16,000 of additional charges incurred based on the work completed for the project, for a total of $115,000 cost. So, this is approximately 15% above our original proposed and approved budget. With that being said, any questions for me?
Any questions, commissioners?
Mr. President, the scope of work, I mean, it's a lot of work that they've done. 15% over budget, I mean, it's not the end of the world. I would have no problem paying that. What I have a problem with, this is the second contract we've had this year where subcontractors or our contractors have come in over budget, and it's adding up. And I don't know what we got to do to get it out there that there's additional work that we want to be contacted first before this work is done, so that we know if we need to adjust our budget and our contracts. You know, so, I'm not upset at you. I'm upset at the procedures that we kind of have in place, even though you're our second one this year. And we just looked at our financial slides, and every one for 2018 is down. So, it bothers me that we're starting to have contractors come in, and I don't want to say assuming that they can just overbill us, but to us, it makes me seem like some admit it, they'll pay it. And I don't mind paying this, but like I said, I think you got the work into it. But I just don't like being told at the end of it, and why not only you, but the previous ones wouldn't have went to our department heads and say, "Here's the situation we got. What do we need to do?" That's my comments on this here. I will support paying this bill, but I'm not happy with the overage.
Understood.
President Decker, one question I have. For Andrew, in your presentation, you talked about photographing for, you know, before, during, and after. Did you do more than what was talked about in the original contract? It says in the original contract, detailed photographic log of site before, during, and after investigation.
Yep. So, based on the original proposal, we were going to go out and survey the borings, and then take photos of the borings. But based on discussion with the previous city attorney, she thought it would be more appropriate to capture the entire pathway of the truck path as well as the borings.
I know. There was a lot of questions on making sure our access, because it wasn't necessarily easily granted to us. And so, we did have to make sure the photographs were done. Anything we done on that property had to be logged. So, thank you.
Mrs. O, if you have a completed report from Wink?
Yes, we do. Pardon me?
President Decker, members of the commission, yes, we have a completed investigation report that we have reviewed from Wink, and it will be brought forward to you at a meeting this summer. I can tell you, just to give you a sense of when it does show up on the agenda, that in reviewing, just going, doing the summary overview of the report that they provided, we took several hours to review the report. And we're going to, when we bring it to you, attempt to condense that down further as far as time. But there is a lot of information about the land, this particular area, that will be important for the commission to consider, as well as, I know several times, it was referenced, the providing an analysis with regards to the risks that any land acquisition will involve, and there will be a legal analysis that will be provided to you along with that investigation report, so that you can have a full consideration of it. So, these requests for the payment are coming to you prior to the investigation being presented to you. But it will, it will show up on the agenda, and it will be a lengthy item when it does.
And the report met?
Yeah, President Decker, I know we met. I can't remember who was all involved, but it was several hours, and they did present it. It is very lengthy.
Okay. And you happy with the scope of work?
Yes.
Okay. I think the thing to what Mr. Steiner was speaking of is, we maybe just have to, on these larger projects, that we're spending this kind of money, have a little bit more oversight, maybe just, you know, checking in a little bit more. I know everybody's busy, but maybe just a little bit, just when we're talking on larger scales like this.
Well, I guess, to be fair, you know, we had entered into a contract not to exceed $100,000, but if, but we hadn't locked in that that was our price. So, if it had come in under $100,000, let's say that it had come in at $85,000 instead of $100,000, we would have paid the 85. So, we weren't in a contract where we said, "This is the price. Somebody could win, somebody could lose." That's not how we negotiated. If it had come in under, we would have paid under. So, I think that's an important clarification to make as far as contract votes as well.
President Decker, too, this contract was an engineering contract with some contractor on-site to do the boring. So, most of it was engineering. So, they're really, I mean, they were on-site of all the boring. So, there really wasn't much more management than that.
Okay.
I guess one thing, and I think Andrew knows, is that we weren't aware that it was going to exceed, you know. I mean, so it says prior authorization.
Yeah, it does say.
And so, we didn't, you know, we tried to have good oversight. Mr. Prowse was there all the time. We had oversight. So, I like that.
I know there was a lot of circumstances, too, on this property. So...
Right.
Any other questions or comments?
The amount is what bothers me.
Right. I understand.
I'm with Mr. Steiner on this. I mean, you know, if the previous city attorney had said that we need to photograph better than what we had proposed in there, why didn't we know about that right away, then? I mean, obviously, she said that upfront. So, then why is that not in the original contract?
I don't know if, I think that discussion, excuse me, President Decker, commission, I think that discussion was maybe after the contract. I mean, we went through this and wanted to make sure that all the photograph and everything was done. I mean, that was one of the bigger issues, was the access to the property and make it. So, I don't, I think there was just the discussion about possible additional litigation or things that was decided just to do more photography, I would assume. Andrew?
Yes, I can speak to that. Yeah. So, to answer your question about, you know, why that wasn't done before that, we do acknowledge that we didn't have the very best process, and some of those changes that we had in those initial meetings should have been added back into, sorry, added back into the proposal and rechanged. So, we do acknowledge that we made a mistake there as well. And that should have been upfront with the city.
Mr. President?
Mr. Steiner?
They've done work for us, and they're more than likely probably going to do a lot more work for us. And we've had a good working relationship. So, I'd just like to caution, you know, on the side of future work, that, you know, we're more up to date on this here. And with that, if you're looking for a motion...
I am.
I would move that we approve the overage bill for Wink.
And the overage is $16,000. So, we have a motion to approve the $16,000 overage.
Second?
With a second. Any further discussion or questions? Now, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is we have some reports, and I think we have Mr. Hirschfeld, Board of Equalization to set a continuation date.
Mr. President, commissioners, that is correct. We're here just to set the date for the continuation of the Board of Equalization meeting. The only adjustment I have to the memo is that I have a conflict the morning of the 24th, but other than that, I'm available all of next week. So...
Mr. President, just going off of the memo from Mr. Hirschfeld, I will be unable to do a Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday of next week.
And I will be out of town three days next week. And I will be out of town three days next week, so.
So the twenty-fourth doesn't work for anybody?
I possibly could do a morning, however.
Well, myself and Mr. Kubes are at the Williston Basin Oil Conference for three days next week.
Which day?
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So.
How long of a meeting are we looking at?
It should not be a long meeting.
If I, if I may offer to the commission, we will be providing an, an agenda that has specified times for this meeting, so it'll be a timetable agenda.
We're still, only have two people coming for this one?
If I remember correctly, I think we left it open for four property owners.
Well, there's not many options. Ms. Murtha's gone Monday, Tuesday, and you're gone Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, that leaves Friday, so.
Friday morning?
And that's the Friday of Memorial Day weekend.
I mean, I could do the morning on Friday, but.
I'm, I'm fine with Friday morning also, so.
I can make that work as well.
Yeah, I think I can.
Steiner?
Friday morning?
Yeah.
Twenty-fifth? They give you enough time? Mr. Hirschfeld?
Friday morning would work great for me, thank you.
Okay, what time?
Eight o'clock.
I suppose we gotta go business hours, right?
See, I'll open at seven thirty, so.
But if we have four people coming, yeah, we try to usually make it during regular business office hours, so eight o'clock would probably be the earliest.
Okay. That work for everyone?
Yes.
Yeah.
Eight o'clock Friday morning?
All right.
You need a motion to?
Yes, please.
Approve that? Okay, has it entertained a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion for the Board of Equalization continuation date for Friday, the twenty-fifth, correct?
Yes.
Eight AM with a second. All in favor of that time and date? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
If it was opposed? It is set for eight o'clock, the twenty-fifth.
Mr. President, Commissioners, thank you very much.
Mr. Kessel, we have some thank you notes.
Thank you, President Decker and Commission. One of the things that we get to do each year, that you as a commission get to do, is provide some dollars, grant dollars to area businesses and political entities. And so, most of the time, they're, they're quite good at recognizing and are thankful for those donations. And so what you have before you are, are thank yous from the House of Manah, RSVP, Keeler Saddle Club, and the Dodge Senior Citizens Center, all recipients of those dollars. So awful nice for them to just recognize and appreciate the amount of resources that you provide to them on a regular basis.
Yes, it's, it's a good thing that we get out there every year and spread a little bit of the, our, our grant dollars and they're very appreciative, so. With that, that will probably be Mr. Kessel's last report.
That is true.
The city administrator. We will, I will save my remarks until later this evening, but thank you for that report and we'll move on, so. Next up, we have Fire Chief Seabock. We have some surplus property.
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. Tonight we'd like to ask the commission's approval for us to declare two items of public education fire prevention equipment as surplus property. One is twenty-three years old, the other, other is eleven years old. Both have served us well and it is time for them to move on.
I just one question, have you notified the pickers?
No, I haven't.
Coming by our twenty-five-year-old Flashy the Fire Dog?
Freddie the Fire Truck.
Do we need a motion then? Yes, a motion to declare this surplus property.
So moved.
Second.
A motion to declare surplus, surplus property and a second. Any further discussion? Questions for Chief Seabock? Now we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have nothing from Police Department tonight or Engineering, we'll move on to Public Works. Public Works Directors are off.
Thank you, President Decker and Commission. And Commissioner Steiner was right, we have more contracts here with Wink. The first is Wink proposal for the 2018 general landfill services. This is an annual contract and they've been doing services for us for?
It's been, it's been their seventh year.
Seventh year, so this is seventh year they're doing our general landfill services. The agreement in your packet, the memo with this is actually for Seven C, so there isn't a memo for that, but it is an annual agreement for engineering services which includes annual report, quarterly monitoring reports, annual survey, some miscellaneous engineering, and Wes, Wink's estimate to cost to complete this scope of work is thirty-nine thousand five hundred and not to exceed without prior authorization. We've been hap- happy with their general landfill services and with our new permit there's even additional requirements that are required, so it's, Wink has been very helpful in meeting, helping us meet all those requirements. So I would, staff recommends approval and if you have any questions, actually we have Andrew here, if you have any additional questions for him.
Any questions for Directors Erhoff or Mr. Fay?
Mr. President, I would move to approve the contract with Wink Associates.
We have a motion to approve the contract for general landfill services.
Second.
A second, any further discussion or questions? Now we'll vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. General landfill services contract is approved. We're right back at air quality permit application.
Thank you. The next contract is the Wink proposal for the Title V air quality permit application. This is performance standards for air quality. Once a landfill reaches a capacity or of two million five hundred thousand cubic meters, the facility needs to acquire a Title V permit to operate from the Division of Air Quality. And we have reached that point. So we got a letter March seventh from the Department of Health that we have met that mark and that we, with that, we have to file, follow the different regulations that is responsibility for the air quality side of the permit. I guess it's right up there. Assist with the permit application and criteria to meet the Department of Health requirements. The proposal amount is fifteen thousand. This was not a budgeted item in 2018, but I think we have capacity in our budget to absorb that for this year. Any questions again, you can ask myself or Mr. Fay.
Any questions for Directors Erhoff? I guess I have one. If, through this permitting process, if, if something comes up, is, do we anticipate any additional costs that we may have to, to meet?
You know what, I'm gonna throw this at Andrew because it's been a while since I've really looked at the performance standards and what's required and I'm not, I'm not up to date, so I will let you discuss this.
Yep, so I can kinda answer the question. So based on the, the scope of work and the question from the state as far as what's gonna be, you know, passed, past things. So this initial proposal is to evaluate the criteria that go into the application as far as meeting the Department of Health standards. Along with that application and the forms that go along with it, we evaluate the new source performance standards or the NSPS CFR requirements from the EPA based on the thresholds of meeting the landfill gas or methane emissions from a landfill. So there, there may be potential additional work beyond this, this first step, but we won't know those until we evaluate the emissions calculations and the application forms.
One of the things, Andrew, if I may, is it like capturing the gas, things like that, that could be, you see in bigger landfills?
Potentially, yep. So based on the thresholds of that two point five million cubic meters of waste capacity, there are criteria based on, on the emissions that are, that are monitored. So if we exceed a certain threshold, there would be requires potentially for putting in an act gas collection system based on those thresholds.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd look for a motion on the air quality permit application to be serviced by Wink.
I just have one question. Gary, would we know this before we do our budget in case we'd have to budget for this air capturing system or gas capturing system?
You know, I'm not sure how long this will take and I would assume, I mean, right now we're doing nineteen's budget, so I mean, I, there's, I don't think I'll have those numbers for, for the next year.
Okay.
You know, if it falls in that timeframe, it would be.
I don't know what the, I mean, if we don't pass, how, what's it, I don't know what kinda timing we have to come back into compliance, is it a year or six months or?
Well, they'll, they'll give us time, as long as we're working with them in the permit, I think they would understand that. We get a proposal and work through the Department of Health, they'll give us the time to do that. That's always, that's never usually an issue with.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Now I would look for a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the Wink contract for the air quality testing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the application for the air quality permit. Any further discussion or questions? Now we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The next item is the approval of the bids for the recycling compactor and transfer trailers.
We opened the bids on Wednesday, May eighth at eight AM. There was one bids that were received and talking to Mr. Prowse, we did send it all over and we were kinda surprised, but we did get one bid. Now this is for the compactor, this is the start of the recycling project, so this is for the compactor in the Baylor Building and the, two of the transfer trailers. And actually, these numbers are, came in a lot better than we anticipated, so we're happy with them. The total for the compactor and the two trailers is two hundred ninety-four thousand five hundred and six dollars. We were conservative in our estimate at four hundred thousand for our budget. We got some quick numbers, we thought the trailers would be more, so we're very happy that they came in under. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, any questions for Mrs. Erhoff? Now I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve.
A motion to approve, Mr. Steiner?
Second.
A second. Any further discussion? Bring none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It is approved. We'll move into planning. Planning Director Hadley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The first item is Great Lakes First Subdivision, it's actually a zone change to industrial for the lots that were listed. This is the second reading of ordinance sixteen fifty-five, there haven't been any changes to that ordinance and staff would recommend approval.
Any questions for Mr. Hadley? Now I'd look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve second reading and final passage of ordinance number sixteen fifty-five.
We have a motion to approve sixteen fifty-five.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion or questions? Bring none, we'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Sixteen fifty-five is passed. Proposed Lupo zone change, Mr. Hadley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, once again. This is a second reading of ordinance sixteen fifty-six and it's a zone change for the Lupo subdivision so they can actually move forward with that. It's from agricultural to rural residential, there haven't been any changes on this ordinance either since the first reading and staff would recommend approval.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Hadley on sixteen fifty-six?
Make a motion to approve the second reading and final passage of ordinance number sixteen fifty-six.
A motion to approve?
Second.
A second. Any further questions or discussion? Now we'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Sixteen fifty-six is passed. We have nothing from Building Code and Enforcement. Move on to item ten, public issues of city concern not on the agenda. If you have a, an issue of city concern, please come forward, state your name for the commission and we will address your concern. Seeing no one from the public, I will close the public issues not on the agenda and we will move into commission items and before we have one executive session item, before we move into that, Mr. Steiner has said he has a couple of items he would like to address.
Yeah, this shouldn't take long, just a couple of comments, see what everybody's thinking. One is in light of what's happened with the Theodore Roosevelt Library. As you know, the city has three hundred thousand that we have given to them, I guess, that was supposed to be in good faith so that they can go to work on behalf of the city. It appears to me that, I don't think we have any friends in the library outside the city of Dickinson. And I'm wondering if now is the time that we direct our attorney to request that that money be reimbursed back to the city of Dickinson. At that point in time, when we get that money, I think we can take a look at it, that we wanna contribute to the university to sustain whatever they're planning on doing with their part of a library if, if they're still gonna have one, I don't know. But I, I think, I don't think anyone's out there working on our interest now, they're using our money but not our, not doing it for our interest.
I've, I've started that discussion with city attorney Murtha about pursuing the request for the three hundred thousand back. And I had made that quite clear when I was in Minneapolis over a month ago, that if this project was not Dickinson, that we would ask. And I've made it quite clear to different entities that our money is staying here, it is not going anywhere else. So we will pursue that and hopefully we can come to some kind of agreement.
I, I really, I got bad feelings about this here, one. Personally, I have some money that I've given to them also, not a lot, but I know there's a lot of people that have given some money, which may not be a lot, but in the end, they did nothing for Dickinson, not a thing. As far as I see it, they used our money to go out and to run a end-round game on us and unfortunately, I think this is what we have to do.
You had another item?
Ah, second item. At the last meeting, a discussion about an event center and I think it was kinda tabled and I think you're talking about a, maybe a cost up to thirty-five thousand to look for.
For an RFP?
For an RFP.
Or, no, feasibility study.
Feasibility study, yep. And I see that wasn't acted on. Just something to throw out there, see what people think. We have an election coming up in November. I don't know if that's enough time for us to get something on the ballot, but maybe we can put this to the community at that time in a form of a question, would you support the city of Dickinson with a maximum of thirty-five thousand, two higher, someone to do a feasibility study? That's gonna tell us a couple of things. I mean, we may save a lot of money. I mean, we may save a lot of money in the end. If the people come out overwhelmingly say yes, I think that gives us a good idea of what we can do when we actually have to put it to them again. If overwhelmingly no, then that tells us the other story.
Well, to put it on the ballot, you'd have to have a petition circulating immediately, and you'd have to have a champion for that, and that would, the deadline would be by July, because we're dealing with this with the sales tax right now, the safety tax. And that type, you know, it would almost have to be circulating already.
Do we have to have a ballot to put that on?
Petition?
Petition.
Petition?
Yes.
How many signatures?
511.
Pardon?
511.
511?
So, and then you know...
We almost need that many to get on City Commission.
See, you'd have to have a champion out there to forward this and...
I don't think it would be a problem getting a champion on it. I mean, I think it's an opportunity to save $35,000.
Well, you're thinking that it's gonna get voted down if we're gonna save $35,000.
No, I don't know. I'm just thinking, if it gets approved, that tells us what else, because we're gonna have to ask for another sales tax to build that facility.
Possibly not.
You know, I think...
Possibly not.
And I understand where you're coming from. I think that maybe the compromise or approach that we could use is to do the feasibility study, which is about $35,000. That will tell us if it's even feasible. And then like we did with the Bijou Activity Center, I think once you find out that it's feasible, or not, if you find out that it's feasible, I think that's when you put it on the ballot to let people decide if they want to move forward. That's how we did it with, at that time, this Badlands Activity Center. I think we as Commission and city staff need to find out if it's even feasible, because it doesn't matter if the public really, really wants it. If it's not feasible to have, then you're chasing down a road that doesn't make sense. So I think we are smart to spend the money to see if it's even feasible. But I agree with you that once we have that feasibility study, if it says that it is, would work in our community, I think you have to the voters to decide if they want it. Even if it's feasible, is there the want, the need, the desire from the community?
The one thing I'll say is, we did a feasibility study on the Patterson Lake Task Force. Spent about $10,000, and there was some grant money out there that helped pay for the feasibility study through different organizations.
I don't know if there'd be grant money for this.
I don't know either.
There might be. But anyway, it came back.
It'd be an opportunity to save $35,000, still get a voice of the public. That's about the greatest feasibility study you can get, but...
But it would have to go through the petition.
I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, it would have to be petitioned and to be put on, and I think the deadline is coming up to get the petitions in July, what were we looking at, Mrs. Carlson?
President Decker, it was July 30th. We had to have everything in for the commission meeting.
And so, I know when we did the feasibility study at Patterson Lake Task Force, it was about $10,000. Came back and said we needed a five, you know, you needed a $5 million building out there, and that was the end of the discussion. So, but we have a, I think we'll approach this subject after the election and see where everyone's at as Commission. So I don't think we're delaying it one month here. It's gonna hurt us in the end.
Long-term project.
Right. To Mr. Steiner's comments about the Presidential Library, for those of the public that haven't read the paper or haven't seen the Facebook, there was another vote, and the vote was nine to two to take the whole project to Midora. And there will be nothing in Dickinson for the Theodore Roosevelt Presidential Library. So our money, as the comment that I have made in the past, our money that we committed to that project will stay here, and we will find a good use for it here to improve the quality of life of Dickinson. We'll, it'll be good. So then we need to, anything else, Commissioners? Okay. Last item on here is executive session with attorney consultation. I would need a motion to move into executive.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to move into executive with a second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
And aye opposed. We are moving into executive session.
That I have received direction from the Commission with regards to ongoing communications, and that this item is completed. Thank you.
We'll continue on with Commissioners' items. Any other Commissioners' items? Like I said earlier, this is Mr. Kessel's last meeting. I'd like to thank him for all his service and let the public know that, hopefully, I don't get this date wrong. I know it's next week. We are having a send-off for Mr. Kessel, and if I'm correct, it is the 23rd at 1:00 here in the City Commission Chambers. So be here. So, and but, if you choose to be. And I will make it a point to get back from the Williston Basin for that. So, again, but for the record and the TV, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And all the state's not losing an asset, just gaining it in another area. So thank you for all your service.
I appreciate that, and I'm not sure if the public is aware. It's been widely mentioned that I'd be going to Minnesota and working in their capital city, well, close to their capital city. Instead, I'll be working in our capital city here in North Dakota. And so the Commissioners all know that. I don't know that...
Do you want to tell them the position?
After South St. Paul made their announcement pre-signing of a contract, there was a flurry of activity, and I'm very humbled by the amount of work that was done to arrive at a job offer that I have accepted to be the Deputy Director of Commerce for the state of North Dakota. And it's, I'm glad that I get to be in North Dakota, that I get to continue to stay here. I'll only be 100 miles away from the community of my birth and the community that I've worked almost 10 years to try to help. I think that the team here has been absolutely wonderful. I think the results have been inside the city and outside, as evidenced by my email signature. I think all those things are things that collectively we've been able to achieve because of the wonderful people that reside in this community. And so I'm happy to be staying close and still working on behalf of North Dakota, and somewhat I can still work on behalf of Dickinson, so...
Well, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Good luck again, and I'm sure you do a job that we're gonna be proud of and the entire state will be proud of. And I want to thank you for your leadership that you've had here for the last nine years. It's been some difficult years. I don't know if a lot of people know how far we've come in the last nine years, but a lot of meetings that have gone about three hours later than this meeting here, lots of them. And you just take the infrastructure meetings and so on. When you talk a quarter of a billion dollars of infrastructure that we've put in and so on, and, you know, just a tremendous job. I think St. Paul's missing out on a pretty good guy, and I think the state of North Dakota is gonna benefit. Thanks again for all you've done.
Thank you, Commissioner Steiner. I really appreciate that.
All right, anything else, Commissioners? Now I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned.